Welcome to the Town of Spring Hope Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Monday, June the 7th. It is 7:00 PM. First item on our agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask everybody that can, please stand, remove your hats, turn face to flag, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item I have on my agenda is the minutes from the board meeting on May 3rd, 2021. Everyone's had a chance to read over them. Are there any changes or additions that need to be made, or would somebody make a motion to pass the minutes as written?
Make a motion, we accept them as written.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item I have on my agenda is Mr. Kyle Precher wishes to address the board over water issues.
All right, I appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. Before, again, I know I only got like three minutes to speak right. I want to give everybody a chance to write down my phone number if you want to. It's 919-801-3229, and I'll be around later. So, water. I think it's a pretty sensitive issue in the town of Spring Hope. My wife grew up here. It's also one of the most complained about issues and one of the longest-standing issues in the town of Spring Hope. I think everyone knows that there's too many ingredients to water, and it's water treatment coming out of the wells, and then also infrastructure. Before we go any further, I'd like to make an honorable mention to Ms. Ann Daniel. She has worked tirelessly on trying to figure out ways that we can finally get clean water and infrastructure repairs ahead of the 20-year plan. She has talked with water systems engineers, elected state representatives, found grants, low-interest loans, and federal money. She has done a tremendous amount of work. If y'all give her a hand involved, thank you. All right, so let's start with infrastructure. How water gets from the wells to our houses. Water main breaks, infrastructure problems. Our infrastructure is crumbling and falling apart daily. No water, low water pressure. We had to deal with it again today. Some people live without water their entire lives, so you know, we do, we are very fortunate. But at the town of Spring Hope, we shouldn't have to deal with no water and low water pressure. This is an infrastructure problem. Maps for the infrastructure are outdated. Systems are not properly maintained. Maps are outdated, excuse me. Paul's right there for a second. Maps are outdated, infrastructure problems, maps are outdated, systems not properly maintained, valves rusted, causing the town to be without water for several days, also lingering low pressure issues. Here's a good one. How can we trust EnviroLink to manage our water systems when they can't even pick up our sticks? You can't keep putting Band-Aids on our infrastructure. It's just, it's not capable of continuing to go that way. For those of you that didn't know, there is a 20-year plan that was implemented not too long ago to map out some improvements to our water issues. Implementing a 20-year plan is the exact thing as kicking the can down the road. Nothing's going to be the same in 20 years. Those plans are going to be completely ineffective and inefficient in just a few years. We can't drag this out for 20 years. You got to do something about it now. We got to do something about it now. I'm personally tired of bathing my daughter in brown water. And the 2020 Quality Report, I think everybody got that by now. Most of the results on that were from 2017. I'm not sure what's up with that. There was only a couple from 2019. There was only one thing on the water report from 2020, and that's chlorine, which they're required to test monthly, and I think we all know there's chlorine in the water because that's how they treat our water. All they do is inject chlorine when it comes out of the wells. There is no treatment facility. Last year, the town was cited and found for not properly testing disinfectants, which were known items to cause cancer. Where are those test results? They're not on the state's website. They're not in the 2020 report that was mailed to us. I think that we just need the answers. We need to know whether they're in there, or they're not in there, whether they're safe or their toxic levels. We need to know. We just don't know. Only got one more paragraph. The EPA has a list of 130 things in public water that should be tested due to human risk. Those things have caused cancer, caused birth defects, developmental problems in young children. This town of Spring Hope gave us one out of those 130 things. One. Some of them have not been tested since 2007. About half of them have not been tested since 2007. These things can, listen to this now, they can be absorbed through your skin while soaking in a bath. They can be inhaled because once the water hits the oxygen, it releases it as a gas. They can be inhaled and absorbed into our food. You don't have to drink the water to get this in your body. Not a single one of us in this room know how safe the water is or how unsafe it is. A 20-year plan to kick the can down the road to the next generation is absolutely unacceptable. I'll close with my Pledge of My Neighbors. Please go vote in November.
Everybody would like to sit the entire evening because EnviroLink will be giving you an in-depth report explaining more about your water effects.
I can't hear you.
I said you're welcome, and please stay for the entire meeting because EnviroLink is an in-depth discussion because of the problems we've had for this month. So, so please, stick around and understand we're all interested in what's going on. Next person that wishes to address the board this evening would be Nancy Perry.
I did owe everything this man said, and I don't know anything about infrastructure, but I know that it wasn't pleasant having to go three days without a shower. But the thing that irritates me the most is the fact that you all turned off the comments for the Facebook page. Granted, the comments that they had for the three-day water outage were not happy. They were not pleasant, but at least people got to make their point known. Now they can't. And I don't think, I know you all have the power to do that, but it really made a lot of people upset and a lot of people angry. Sometimes they just need to vent, and they can vent, and it'll all go away. So now you have more people upset that might not have been as upset. And the last little water issue with the low pressure, if you didn't have Facebook, you wouldn't have known about it. There was no robocall. The people that don't have Facebook, and some of the elderly people don't even know how to use Facebook in this community, they don't have any way of knowing what's going on if you don't make that robocall. So I think you need to turn the comments back on. That's it.
I was, I was, why were the comments turned off?
Unless you're Ms. Ann Daniel?
No. Well, I asked you to put my name on there, and she said I didn't have to.
I said, I asked you if you were going to have a statement.
I said, no, I have a question. She said I could ask.
I said, depending on how he was going to run the meeting, whether he was going to allow comments.
Okay, so why were the comments turned off?
You can ask that at the end of the meeting before we get to other. Next person wishing to speak with Ed is Ann Daniel.
Thank you. We're all in this together, and you know, we're not pointing fingers or anything, but if I can go with my little knowledge of technical knowledge, if I can go and find out these things about low-interest loans and grants and federal dollars, you know, why can't somebody else on the board do that? I mean, have we actually looked to see what it would cost if Bailey can do it of all towns? I know Spring Hope can do it, you know? And the guy I talked to last week, he said drinking their water now is like drinking mountain water. It was so clear, and they had the same problems we did. Old pipes, rust inside the pipes, constant breaking down of the water system. So just, you know, and I was looking at y'all when Kyle was talking, and some of y'all looked like you could rather be anywhere than here, and I understand that. But you know, we need to pull together, and we love our town, and we want to, and you've got 40-some houses that's going to be built, I think, soon down where Tony lives, down by Tony's place, you know? And can we, can we, do we have enough that we can handle 40-some more houses with the water system like it is? And thank you for anything that you can do.
I know you would all probably like us to respond right here on the spot. I mean, you've had time to think of your questions. We've been dealing with issues. Hopefully, at the end of the meeting, when all the commissioners have a chance to speak, they can address some of your issues. So I'm sure will the manager and EnviroLink. But, but to come in here, especially on public forum, and us have no idea what you're going to say or request, and to give you a short answer with the amount, no amount of time to think about it, is, is one of the first things they teach you in government is go with, you know, take your time, don't hesitate. So hopefully, several of your questions will be answered this evening. The first item under public hearing and new issues or new business would be consider action to contract with Pedway Mills and Pearson PA for auditing services for fiscal year 2021.
Yes. So for this evening, we have Phyllis Pearson from Pedway Mills and Pearson here this evening. If you all have any questions. Again, this is for the auditing contract and in the amount of $10,000. Give me questions.
Do you have any questions? Or you don't bother us?
Commissioners, you have any questions, or? I'll go with the easy one. How long have you been in business? What other units of do you work with?
Okay. We have been in business since 2004 under the name Pedway Mills and Pearson. We've had names subsequent to that. My staff, I have 36 years auditing governments and nonprofits. Around in this area, we audit Nashville, Wendell, Barnes. Let's see, I'm trying to remember them all, and that gets hard. We have audited Tarboro. We have audited the city of Dunn in Harnett County. Currently, we are audit Whitakers, LeCama. So we have not much experience. Each annually, we do about 15 municipality audits, and then 60 school audits, but that's another sideline we have. And I'm bringing you a fully trained staff when we come. They're not unfamiliar with the requirements. We spend a lot of time during the year obtaining, training in gas fees and fast fees, and then the requirements in St. Louis, Carolina, because they're unique.
Anyone else?
I just have a question for Jay. So are we saying, because I'm getting that from two separate contracts, so are we keeping Pedway and May Place, or are we switching?
Yes, we're keeping both. Pedway Mills and Pearson will be doing the auditing services. May Place will be doing the bookkeeping.
There's a new set of professional standards under the yellow book that are requiring most towns to separate their bookkeeping, financial statement writing functions that used to be done as part of the audit into a separate service, and then you have to have an auditor, and you have to have someone with sufficient skills, experience, and knowledge to do a technical review of your audit. It makes it more expensive, honestly, but that is a requirement under the belief that if the auditors write the financial statements, they're auditing their own work.
So separating out the two services only increased the amount per annual basis of $2,000.
It's a requirement from the state?
Yes.
Yes. If, when you review your new contract, if you read it carefully, there's a lot of explanations in the contract itself. They're a lot easier to put into there.
Commissioners, any questions? Do I have a motion to enter into the contract with Pedway Mills and Pearson?
I make a motion when we're entering the contract with Pedway Mills and Pearson for auditing services for the town.
I have a motion and a second to agree to enter into the contract with Pedway Mills and Pearson for auditing services for fiscal year 2021. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay.
Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity.
The next item we have on the agenda is consider action to contract with May employees for bookkeeping services for fiscal year 2021.
And that is in the amount of $6,000.
Mr. May is not here?
He's unavailable, yes.
Mr. May was unavailable. He's been doing our bookkeeping for?
I mean auditing.
Auditing for several years. Do I have a motion to renew this contract for, is this a multi-year or single year?
Single year. We do it single.
Single year for the next year.
Make a motion, we approve the contract with May in place for bookkeeping services for the coming year.
I have a motion and a second to renew the contract with May in place, PA for bookkeeping services for fiscal year 2021. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion is passed. The next item on the agenda is consider action to renew legal services with Fields and Cooper.
Yes, again, this is the retained services similar to last year in the same amount for our $2,800 retainer.
Do I have any questions for attorney? Do I have a motion to renew the contract for legal services with Fields and Cooper?
I make a motion to renew the legal services.
Second? I have a motion and a second to agree to renew legal services with Fields and Cooper. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is consider action on approval of water and tax write-offs.
Again, this has been prepared by our tax collector slash customer service town employee, Sandra Morris. And again, tax write-offs on the front page. On the second page of that memo is the water write-offs. And again, taxes are 10 years, water is three years.
Commissioners have a question? Do I have a motion to approve the water and tax write-offs?
I make a motion to approve the write-offs that are presented.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve the water and tax write-offs. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Next item on the agenda is consider action to advertise outstanding 2020 taxes.
Again, that is the list for the advertisement for the tax links on real properties.
I'm going to need a motion and a second to advertise the tax links.
I can ask a question before we do that. What avenues have we taken or haven't taken as far as contacting?
So the prior, the prior page of the memo for our tax write-offs, when we do, we use a debt setup program. We also garnish wages for those that are working. And again, with the debt setup, it's a system where, again, we try to collect except for those on disability, social security, or other forms of government assistance. So that's the forms that we initiate and take to, to collect.
Were you asking about the tax write-offs for the tax?
The tax of real property taxes.
These are the people who have not met the deadlines to pay their taxes, Bob?
So for the, for the, I'm sorry. So are you asking about the, the list of the advertisement of tax links?
Yes.
Yes. So these are the amounts that, that are due, that, I'm sorry, that they have not paid, and then we are advertising in the local papers with the announcements.
But what I'm asking is, what avenues have we taken before? Is it just we send letters, and then that's just?
I believe the letter notifications, and I believe we send at least two, two, yeah, two times.
Make a motion when we publish the advertise outstanding taxes for 2020.
I have a motion and a second to advertise the outstanding 2020 taxes. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is consider action to approve discoveries and releases for Nash County and Spring Hope. Jay, I will let you explain this.
Okay, so for the releases, it states here, release for postmark. The post office didn't get these notices out soon enough, so they didn't qualify for, for the discounts, and so we have to look at the postmark date, and if they do, they are given the releases for that. And then I believe when you go down to the one for change in value of property for Nash County, I believe that a building on their property had been removed, so again, they're giving credit for $69.68 for that church. So again, most of these are released for postmark reasons. And then for discoveries, these are situations where Nash County have discovered additional tax items that are required for real property, and so they notify us and let us know what
Once again, I will need a motion and a second to approve the discoveries and releases for Nash County and Spring Hope.
Make a motion to approve the discovery releases, discoveries and releases for Nash County and Spring Hope.
I have a motion and a second to approve the discoveries and releases for Nash County and Spring Hope. If there are no more, if there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The next item is a request from GFL regarding the CPI index, and I know it was requested by the board as a representative of GFL here tonight.
Yes, Crystal Sloan is here. She's the general manager for GFL.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight and explain our request for price increase. Each year, inflation is always a concern. The cost of business doesn't stay flat or stagnant. I think we can all, you know, have that in our own personal lives. We go to the stores, any kind of store, things do increase over the years. The most well-known indicator of inflation is the Consumer Price Index, otherwise known as the CPI. That measures the percent change in the price of goods and services consumed by households. We base our increases on the CPI, the Cost of Living Index. This is standard language in most contracts. It is fair for both parties, and it helps us try to cover some of the cost, the rising cost of more business. This year, that the CPI reflects an increase of 4.6%. We're asking for 3%. Some examples of the way inflation impacts our businesses, containers, resin for residential cars and recycle bins has increased probably, I think, around 9% in the past several months. 700 residential cars cost us around $38,000. That is now the, the new price. Disposal fees at surrounding transport stations and landfills, those tipping fees typically increase yearly. Recycle processing fees continue to increase. Steel for metal containers right now, the steel surcharge is very high. There's a shortage of truck parts currently that creates increases and also challenges with getting parts. Safety supplies has been an issue through COVID. And then we're having to pay our employees more to maintain staffing. There's a national shortage of drivers. I'm sure a lot of people have heard that on the news. And then our regulatory environmental fees also associated. We appreciate consideration. Like I said, the CPI is reflecting 4.6%. We are respectfully asking for consideration for 3%.
To add to that, the 3% would be $277.06 per month at the 3% rate, and again, there would be no new increase to residents. Again, the town would be absorbing the rate increase.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for GFL?
I don't have any questions, but I got a comment. Me personally, I'm very dissatisfied with your service, and I, and I don't see where we really merit getting an increase. From time to time, you're supposed to get garbage picked up on Friday, sometime on Saturday. Sometime is Monday. So I'm going to speak for me. I'm very dissatisfied with your service. So I really, I really don't think you merit an increase.
After you guys make the comments about that, then I'll respond. So go ahead. Anyone else?
I'm going to back her. I'm not happy with your services either. You guys pick up the trash, and then I have to go behind and pick up trash that's in my yard. So I guess Ms. Lucas has been a little nice with it, meaning I think you need a decrease. But that's just me personally. But I just don't, I don't feel like you guys are presenting Spring Hope with the service that we actually need. So I don't agree that I can increase.
Any other comments before I respond? So how do we measure service, right? How do we measure service reliability? There's 657 track points in this town we put. Times 4.33, that is 2,844 track service opportunities a month. We service their recycling every other week. That's 657 times 2.165, that's every other week. If you add those service opportunities together, you've got 4,262 opportunities for us to service this town in a monthly period. 99% reliability with that would be 42 complaints in one month. 99% reliability. I reviewed every email correspondence from this town since last December. Some of those correspondence just lets us know about new starts, some notifies us that bulk is out, some notifies us about white goods, such as grills, special things like that, also asking about what's acceptable. Some of it misses. Some of it is, we didn't pick up things beside the container. Some of it is, okay, there's things outside this recycle bin that was thrown in someone's yard. Some of those email correspondences have to do with a miss that might have been that a resident didn't have a container out. We have everybody else on one street service except one, and we come back and get them. We have a very good relationship with the town. We check in every day. The town is very good about letting us know before we leave the town. Okay, this person's called, go back and check this address. We're not perfect, but we do respond timely. We have a good relationship with people in the town, and we recognize there are some areas of opportunities. We've had some repeater issues with maybe all the recycling not getting picked up beside the bin. We've met with our staff about reutterating what good service is. We hold our folks accountable, and our priority is to continue to give good service. And I think based on all the emails that I looked at, there were 27 to 30, if all the emails were correct, that actually addressed a service concern. Now, there were more emails that I actually went through, every single one, to look at what the correspondence was. Do we have some area of opportunity? I'd say yes, but I do think overall, based on every email looked at from December, that the service is good. We have challenges right now, and it's not an excuse, just I didn't mention driver shortage. We are having- We are having to work with our folks and make sure we're meeting the expectations of everyone here. But based on all the information that I saw and our relationship with the people in the town, our guys come in here every day, we're checking, we're not perfect yet. But when you're not perfect and you make mistakes, all you can do is recover from that and try to fix the problem. Like I said, a lot of times, they notify us that they were in the town, and we go back and do what? Sometimes we do things that really are outside of the contract, sometimes. But it's what you have to do sometimes to give good service. And again, I'm recognizing that we have some areas of our talent we're working on. But after I review the emails and everything from December, I feel like we're giving at least 99% of service. That's 42 complaints in a whole month. We didn't have 42 complaints since December. I think based on all of that and trying to put that in perspective, I believe we give good service. But again, our top priority is making you guys happy and continuing to work on that.
So you say you're working on the opportunities. What are you actually doing as far as the opportunities?
We, I physically met with the drivers and told them, we need to give above and beyond service. I think there's also an opportunity with being on the same page with the contract language. It doesn't specify. Some towns want you to pick up everything around the container. Some towns don't. They want people to get a second car. When you go to certain homes, week after week, and they have extra trash, they probably need to pay for an extra can, just like bulk. Sometimes there's a lot of things on the curb. It's not spelled out of how much bulk. I mean, sometimes there's, I'm not going to say a household, but it looked like someone moved out. So those are things, sometimes we're picking those things up, and I think maybe we could be, that's an opportunity, I think, for us to work with the town and designate, you know, what are those opportunities for you as well, to have a consumer or resident get another container? We're meeting with the drivers. Like I said, I personally met with the drivers. I talked to them about every bit of this. People aren't going to be perfect, but how we respond to it is, is important. I think we always respond within 24 hours, exactly like the contract says, and most times it's the same day. I'm personally more involved now. If Jay ever needs me, he can call my cell phone. I answer my cell phone 24/7.
Again, you might even get complaints in the email. I've had more complaints in 47 about your service. You might even get them an email, but I've had complaints around this town.
Okay. Well, if someone could just let me know what I need to do to fix this, we'll fix it. All I can go on is the information I get. And when it gets to a theater or serious situation, Jay has called me, we do address it, and we will address it.
I will say this. I had a neighbor that had, they, the guys, your guys spilled their recycling on them.
Uh huh.
And I gave you a call, or actually I called Jay. And I will say that within an hour, not only were they back, but members of supervision, I don't know if it was you, I know there was a company car.
I was.
So they were there, and they were, they were taking advantage of the opportunity. Now, are there more opportunities to be had? Absolutely is. Is it not picked up on Friday every week? Yes, that's true. I think one time we've got a call that it would be late until Saturday. I think an opportunity to improvement would be maybe a little better notification to say, we're not going to make it Friday. It will be Saturday. I think people will be a little more forgiving if they're, if they're told. And maybe that's a phone tree issue. Maybe I didn't get the phone through when it came out. But most of them I get. But I'm just saying, I'll support some of what she is saying. But I'll also say that as long as you continue to improve on the opportunities. I mean, I understand where you're coming from with the, you know, stuff to find labor, all the truck parks. I'm very well aware of what's going on there and everything you got going on.
I, to my knowledge, when we are late or have a delay, we are contacting the girls in the office to tell them immediately when we know. Sometimes you might have a breakdown Friday afternoon.
Right.
Late in the day, and there's no notification that people don't know.
Right.
I'm, I'm admitting that there's an area of opportunity here, but, you know, you did mention the truck parts. Unfortunately, you know, some of the trucks are going to break down, and that's out of our control. What's in our control is can placement. We got to close the lids. We got to do away with the repeater issues, and we are aware of it and working with our folks. I don't think you expect us to be perfect, but you expect us to fix it and respond timely, which I think we do.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, I will say, I'm more pleased with the trash pickup than I am the leaping limb. By far. And I know you're not leaping limb. So a lot of people don't understand. A lot of people think Ireland picks up the trash, and a lot of people think that GFL picks up the leaping limb. So that's something that needs to be clarified. You do a much better job than leaping limb. A lot better job than leaping limb. My neighbor across the street would say, I've had to help come out with leaping limb pickup.
Well, it would take like three weeks, a week?
No, about, almost about three months.
Trying to be nice.
I can guarantee you that I am personally involved. I'll hit these drivers eyeball to eyeball.
Yes.
And, and if I have an issue, I'm going to address it. If I have to drive here myself, I'll do it.
Thank you.
I have heard what you said, Ms. Lucas, and I am going to be more involved. You're not going to get those complaints like that, like you're saying. I, I am more involved, staff's more involved, we're having more conversations. The driver shortage is real. It's, it's very real. We got to get these guys on the same page, customer service we're in. Some people, you know, you have employees work for you. You're trusting them and making good decisions on the street. They don't always do that. You have to hold them accountable, and sometimes you got to move on to somebody else. So we are aware, and we're trying to address it. Do you have more to add on it?
I am now looking for a motion to approve their request, deny their request, or table the issue.
Based on your reaction time and your response time and your desire for improvements, I will make a motion that we grant the increase and has no, have no cost to the citizens that the town will afford, uh, my motion that we grant the increase to GFL. Mr. Quin.
I'll second that motion. Shallow his comments, your response. I'll second that motion. Appreciate you trying to improve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request for the, what was your number, 3%?
Yes, sir.
3% increase. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay.
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 Motion is granted.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is consider action for proposal for survey engineering and construction inspections for the CMAC project with stocks engineering.
Kevin Barnett with stocks engineering is here this evening for any questions that you may have. Again, for the CMAC project, the total cost of this portion for professional engineering services is $143,660.
Mr. Barnett, would you like to address the board?
He's sneaking out.
There he is.
Bill, can I stand here?
Yes, absolutely.
Again, this is the CMAC project that we started around 2018. The grant funds were awarded in that time from NCDOT through the CMAC project. And ultimately, because of funding, they shut it down for about a year. So now we're finally getting it kicked back up. The funds are now being released. So that's kind of what's driving the start of this project to get back going. But again, this is the Saddle project that we started in 2018.
Mr. Manager, would you like to refresh us on what portion of this is, is grant loan?
So I believe, I don't have the number in front of me, but the whole total project is around roughly just under $800,000. The federal government is subsidizing the project at 80%. The local match that we're required to put in is 20%. So from this total amount of $143,660, we are responsible for 20% of that cost.
And of that 20%, 100% of that is being funded through Powellville funds, which comes from NCDOT semi.
So our entire 20% is from Powellville?
Yes. We are expecting to be able to, with the upcoming Powellville as well addition, we are expecting to cover 20% of the full project by Powellville.
All right. I would need a motion for action on this proposal for the survey engineering and construction inspections for the CMAC project with stocks engineering.
Making motion, we approve the action to survey engineering, construction inspections with stocks.
One second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proposal with stocks engineering for the CMAC project. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is consider action for the adoption of Resolution 2021-04, the feasibility study request for NCDOT on 64 alternate route designation.
So this started about with a concerned citizen that I contacted the town regarding traffic concerns. These traffic concerns were primarily with the truck traffic through town and their speeds. Again, initial inquiry and discussions with NCDOT Division 4 stated that even with the removal of the 64 alternate designation through town, we're not sure what all the fallout of the effects could be from that. Also had some input from James Simmons, who is also part of our RPO, the Rule Planning Organization. And so he's with the Upper Coastal Plain Rule Planning Organization. And so what we're requesting from, from this is a feasibility study that can be performed by NCDOT, looking both at the potential speed reduction and route designation changes to US 64 alternate. And again, I had some information in here that, that was given to us by NCDOT is that at some point in the near future, US 64 will be reclassified as I-87. And when that's the case, more than likely we'll lose our alternate designation. Again, this resolution that is attached with this memo is basically if the town has interest in pursuing this, there, again, there is no cost to the town. This feasibility study would be provided by NCDOT, but we are required to present a resolution for the town's desire to move forward with this.
So I have a question, if the commissioner does have a question off that. Are they looking at removing the 64 alternate designation?
Yes.
So then we would pick up another mile at least of town roads that we would be fully responsible for maintaining, cutting the ditches, and all repairs?
That, that's possible, but I would have to follow up with NCDOT in that regards. They did state that, that they're not responsible for totally the designation changes. Again, that's a separate entity, which listed here in the memo, which was the AA SHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. I'm sure they would have some input in that, but they would not be the deciding fact, final group on that decision.
Would this also affect the volume of truck traffic? Would the road then become local traffic only, and none of the large trucks would?
It could.
Oppose as to our choice to be allowed to turn or make the move from 581 South to 581 North in town?
It could be diverted to another, another intersection or another ramp per se. But again, that would all kind of probably be considered in this study when, when they look into that. But I could follow up with the board as far as questions whether or not that stretch of 64 would be added towards the town's calculation for the Powellville. Not sure. I would have to follow up with that.
That would be the follow-up, where we get additional funds to maintain this road. But you're looking, I guess, from going 581 South heading north, MoMar better look out because they're going to divert the traffic off of the Spring Hope exit, and the most convenient one would be to send them to MoMar and come in through the eastern side of town and?
That has been discussed or talked about, but again, the feasibility study does not necessarily mean that we would make that decision. It would just look into the potential impact, have a report from that to, to present to the town.
So in that study, would it answer some of Buddy's questions? Is that part of what?
Yes, and then some of the other questions could be answered beforehand, but, but the others would be answered with, with the study.
Then did you also say once 64 bypass gets the I-87 designation, that we're probably going to lose the alternate 64 designation anyway?
We would lose the alternate designation. It could be that we would just maintain the US 64 designation.
And what would the difference with that be?
Well, 64 is being replaced by 87.
So we would go back.
How would we affect alternate, and our responsibility toward alternate if that occurred?
And again, that would be from some of the information that might come from the study. And one of the, one of the information that did come from us stated from them was that every resident and business along the corridor would more than likely be required to change their address, possibly.
Would it not also be beneficial if we're sending this to DOT and all? If they're looking at rerouting 64 alternate, do they not need to reroute 581 where it crosses through town? Because I would almost surely bet, after living here as many years as I have, the majority of traffic that we have crossing through town is between the two 581 ramps.
And, and the board is more than welcome to, to amend this resolution to include 581 as well too, through town, north and south?
Would that affect deliveries of large trucks to your town?
Again, it depends on what you're going to do. If you remove the designation or reroute things, the feasibility study would probably have some answers in regards to what, what those consequences would be or other, or other options.
There's nothing really happens from this. This is just a study. This is just a request for a study.
This is just requesting a feasibility study for NCDOT to, to conduct. Yes.
My, my only reason for my questions is, are we owning a can of worms? I mean, we just got, after 10 years, got Bojangles to, to build, and now this feasibility study, are they going to route trucks around after?
They're not going to.
We've probably invested in the interchange.
Again, some of that would be the input on what the town would like to pursue or do. But again, this study is just to see what the options are, what could happen.
And it said it is nothing but a study.
Obviously, I think we got plenty of questions, and I think this should answer them, right? So it makes, makes sense that this study is the right thing to do. So I make a motion that we, that we adopt the Resolution 2021-04 for the feasibility study request for NCDOT on 64 alternate route designation. Can we add in the 581?
You can. I'll, I'll make the changes to the language of the resolution to include it. If you want to include the whole portion of 581 that runs through town limits.
If we're going to do a study, I think that means we can answer on those two routes too. 581 goes in and out.
So your motion would lose that?
Yes.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to agree to the Resolution 2021 with the addition of adding Highway 581 into the study by NCDOT. There is no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2122 budget presentation. And I will need a motion and a second to go into public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into public hearing. There's no more discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Mr. Manager, I'm going to turn it over to you to field questions for the public hearing on next year's budget, and you give a short intro.
So again, the, the final numbers, total numbers. So again, the final numbers, total numbers, has not changed from the draft from the previous month. Again, we are looking at a budget within the general fund at one million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. We are looking at the Water and Sewer Fund, which is the enterprise fund, at four hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Again, for a total of one million, eight hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Again, you can see from the annual budget ordinance, the breakdown of the general fund, you have the governing body, the administration, buildings, public safety streets, Powellville Sanitation, Recreation, Library, Cemetery, and Museum. And again, you have the list of the revenues as well from the budget ordinance. As for the Water and Sewer Fund expenditures and revenues, again, under expenditures, you have the administration and finance, and then you have the operations breakdown. And then from the revenues, we have, again, water usage charges, sewer usage charges, taps and connection fees, and other revenues. From this year's budget, the property tax will remain the same, unchanged, at sixty-seven cents per one hundred dollar valuation. We are looking at this with a ninety-six, forecasting with a ninety-six percent collection rate for property taxes for the upcoming fiscal year, which is comparable to prior years. And again, from this proposed budget, this represents the total of the one million, eight hundred eighty-two thousand, two fifty, fifteen point three eight percent increase from the prior year budget of one million, six hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. Again, the large difference with that is the committed match for the CMAC pedestrian connection project. Other information as far as the review of the budget, we're looking at a one percent COLA for town employees, and again, personnel ranks as typically the highest expenditure for any local unit or government, for us representing forty percent of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, again, budgeted for staff. If you have any questions.
So this is the public hearing, and I know a lot, Sean, from the paper. We feel that, the gist is no tax increase. Town employees are looking at a one percent raise. You just heard GFL. Sand their field is four point six. They asked for three, and we argued over that. This is really, this is a public hearing. This is your point in time if you'd like to ask questions about the budget.
Well, can it be published before it is voted on? I mean, I don't know.
It is available at Town Hall. It's available on the Town Hall website as well, too.
Can you take your mask down so I can hear? It's available where?
It's available online on the town's website, and it's available here at Town Hall as well, too.
So actually, we're not planning on approving the budget tonight. We will...
The board typically, I mean, the board voted on it tonight, but we typically wait for amendments at the end of the year when we recess the meeting.
At the end of nights, we will recess to the very end of the month, so we can make any final adjustments. If you want a chance to pick up a copy of the budget, you'll have a couple of weeks to look over and see if you have any questions. It has to be passed by July first.
What you're saying is if you're not computer literate, you have no idea what's going on.
You can pick up a copy here at the town office. You can get a paper copy here at the office. In the time of your business hours, you can come and get a copy.
It would make it probably easier if you call first and let them know you're coming, and they can print one for you.
And we have copies available front already.
Public, have you other questions?
You can drive through the window to pick up. Michelle just said you can come right through the window, so you don't have to get out of the car.
No, because when she was talking about the pickup thing, she says how many email she'd received. Well, there's a lot of people that don't email. That's my point.
We also have a public hearing notice that's published in the newspaper as well, too, two weeks prior to the public hearing for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
My name is Whitey Hills. I work for Senator Ross in Sanitation Department and Public Works, and most of the towns, like the town of Young, they're kicking and bailing out. Is there any way that y'all can have a town of Spring Hope picking up the garbage and fixing up the town or anything like that? Have y'all ever thought about that idea?
We've looked at it. We're looking at running numbers. We're actually looking for people for competing quotes, even if we break it up, such as garbage or leaf and limb or maintenance. It is batted around multiple times during the year. We're, you know, for every instant that you're unhappy with them, we're getting six other colleagues too, so we're hearing from everyone.
And why are you rewarding EnviroLink for bad behavior?
That wasn't EnviroLink. EnviroLink hasn't been given an increase.
Uh, garbage pickup, I mean.
That's GFL.
GFL, right. So why aren't you rewarding them for bad behavior? If they're just going back the last five months, what about the last five years?
They haven't had the contract with the town, but...
Example, I just said in five months. How long have they had the contract?
That's what I was asking, approximately a year?
No, I think it's been several years since they took over for veterans, when they bought out veterans.
But that was veterans.
Yes, that was veterans, but after veterans, I believe...
We had someone else after that.
No, 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 veterans. Waste industry, but Waste Industries changed, named to GFL, so it has been Waste Industries slash GFL that has taken over since veterans. So that has been at least, I believe, two plus, between two to three years.
And you say it for their service?
Yes. We had Waste Industries prior to bidding out to veterans. And so my experience, I've been here for over five years. My experience, when I first came here, we had Waste Industries, and the services that they provide now will exceed the type of services we were getting at that time, five plus years ago. So again, that's near the end of the contract. That's when we decided to bid out services. We awarded the contract to veterans, waste services, and then they were bought out by Waste Industries, and now Waste Industries has changed names to GFL.
I know how competitive it is to find people to work at the wages that you can afford to pay them, so I know that they're having issues, but I just don't think you should reward people for bad behavior. And you say that if you're satisfied with your service.
Well, we keep rewarding EnviroLink for bad behavior, because they still work.
That's my point. You're rewarding bad behavior?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question about how much of the budget is allotted for infrastructure improvements, considering the amount of development that we're seeing coming out this way? Is there an allotment for that in anticipation of what's coming?
As far as infrastructure, we have separate line items for repairs and services, so, and again, our budget is broken up into two separate things. So we have the water and sewer side, the enterprise, the business side of that, and then we have the general fund. So for example, in water and sewer, we have earmarked seventy thousand, four hundred dollars of the four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for repairs and services. Typically, most of the other line items within that four hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred are typically fixed. So we have salaries and wages. We have benefits. We also have utilities. We have the contract payments towards EnviroLink. We also have license and permits that are due. We have our USDA loan repayment on the, I'm sorry, that's good state, the country and lift station. We also have the wastewater treatment plant debt payment, which is a low interest loan from the USDA. So a lot of the costs that are typically part of that four hundred and eighty-six thousand is already fixed. But again, a portion of that for services and repairs is at seventy thousand, four hundred.
So that would include new services?
Putting in new services? So typically, when we have a development, so somebody mentioned the subdivision, all of the services and lines would be provided by the developer, and once that is built, if you're going to get my wrong, Kevin, built out to code and the street, they're dedicated back to the town for us to take care of and maintain.
That's correct. With any new development, the developer, who's developing the properties, required to put in all the new infrastructure, water, sewer, water, sewer taps, and they pay one hundred percent of that cost, and then they donate those assets to the town's spring.
And then we'll require to maintain them.
That's correct. But then, but keep in mind that at that point, you get revenue from the water and sewer services that should be high enough to maintain them systems.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the general public? Yes, ma'am.
Why are we here today? Instead of the other meeting facility was larger. When we were down at the Town Hall, everybody could have sat.
Typically, if social distancing reduces, and we can put the chairs closer together, this room is pre-ears, held us just fine. It's maintaining the seating. There's internet issues as well as there's some other issues with the build down there. It's just, it's better to be here. Sorry, I didn't step on the toes, that was too bad. Anyone else?
Is this the comments section, or can I ask a question?
If it is, if it's about the budget, yes. But please stay, and I'm sure one of these five people would be more than happy to call on you. If they do not, I will. Would you get a ride to train to the end? And that's when our point comes. All right, if there is no more comment from the public, I will need a motion and a second to go back into open session. I have a motion and second to go back into open session. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Mr. Kim? I have a copy of this new budget. Are you looking for anything else tonight, other than having your public hearing?
Tonight is just a public hearing, presentation of the budget. Obviously, the board has the option to consider action on it, but typically, again, with this meeting potentially being recessed.
You would request that the meeting be recessed and had, again, at the end of the month for final adjustments.
Final adjustments or amendments, yes.
Nobody on the board has a problem with it? Maybe we'll do the next item. Next item I have on my agenda, I guess we're jumping down to L now, are we not, sir?
L? No, I'm sorry, M.
L.
Oh, I'm sorry, L, yeah, you have the new update. Sorry, correct, yes, Chamber of Commerce.
I understand Mr. Vester was here. I saw him earlier, our local president, the Chamber of Commerce.
I believe everybody could see you. Nice to see everybody at the public here tonight as well. Just give a little update. Last month, we talked about food trucks. Couple of updates there, we're working towards scheduling food trucks to be here in town. I'm definitely looking forward to it. So is my treadmill, but... I invite everybody to visit the Chamber's website, visit springhope.com. You'll see a new tab at the header on there called Calendar. There's a calendar page now on the website, and you, as long as anybody else, can also see available spots and dates for food trucks, as well as Town Hall meetings, Plenary Board meetings, things like that, as well as the town, we've included on that calendar as well. All of anybody with food trucks can always contact myself, and we can get them scheduled on the dates marked available. Once they're booked, you'll see that switch over to what food truck is coming, their menu and things they'll be bringing that night. So we're working together with Jay and the Town Hall staff, as well as the National Health Department, formalize the last couple of things, and we'll start booking food trucks. Chamber may also ask the board tonight for blessing or a resolution to approve that we may add a live music element using downtown depot's stage. That was part of its original intention when it was constructed, to add live music possibly on Saturday and Friday nights through the summer months. But I would ask for your...
You're asking for a motion and a second?
A motion to allow the Chambers to utilize that public space for that purpose.
What would be the hours? I'm going to ask the big question up front.
We would cut it off by ten o'clock, which I believe is in line with our noise ordinance. So afternoon hours cutting off at or before ten.
I would need a motion and a second from the board to...
Are you doing the music yourself personally?
No, I am not.
In that case, I'd make a motion that we allow some music.
Do it a second. I have a motion and a second to allow the Chamber of Commerce to add music to their venue on Friday and Saturday nights, to be over by ten P.M. So I say it slowly, clearly, while...
It's on record.
It's on record.
We only pass the plan to do it twice a month, so it's...
Please don't let yourself down and come back and ask for... Right now, you're allowed every weekend.
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second before us to allow the Chamber of Commerce to add music to their venues on Friday and Saturday nights, ending at ten P.M.
Sure.
All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Thank you, Mr. Vester.
I got a question. I need one question. So I was asked, you know, at the Puskin Festival, Buddy would say we kind of did the trailer at Penn. It's not necessarily always a food truck. So I've had people interested in the fact that if they got permits and they had a Penn service with a cooker, would that be allowed as well?
To the best of my knowledge, I would point them to the County Health Department first.
And that same thing at the Puskin Festival?
Yes.
You would just make sure that the Chamber wouldn't have a problem?
Yes, that is.
Because then we would have some tents set up.
Tents, food truck, that are used interchangeably. Anything else from the board?
Make sure you get that permit issued.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're now moving to old business. Do we have anything from our town attorney this evening?
One item, but that's for closed session.
No, thank you for the new contract.
Yes, appreciate your confidence in Fields and Cooper. We continue to look forward to working for the town. I meant to say that when you passed it the first time, I think you hit your eye.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I was going to mention it.
The contract's already negotiated again next year, sir.
Yes, and I don't expect any board action after my closed session, so if you want to do everything you want.
Next item on the agenda would be the report from EnviroLink.
Good evening. I'm Libby Jenkins, and I have...
Tracy, please come to the front. Even if you kind of, if we need to ask Michelle Blue, we'll give you the side of room, so that you're not speaking behind anybody.
Okay. Tracy's going to go over the operation and maintenance part of our report, and then I'll address the other issues.
Excuse me. As far as the operations and maintenance report, basically, you have section one, which is your activities, public relations, educational information, distribution, community involvement, noteworthy events, town issues, significant meetings, and operation highlight. There was nothing to report for the month of May, and your work order summary. A total of eighty work orders were completed for May. Two re-reads, which is, there's a hundred and thirty on one list. Four reads of individual meters, seventeen turn-ons, two turn-offs. One meter locate, nine leak investigations, seventeen water quality pressure investigations, three repair water manual or service, one locate utilities, two flush hydrant, one clear sewer, service line blockages, four sewer line manhole repair corrective maintenance, one lift station alarm, one sanitary or spore sewer investigation, three for delivering trash cans or pickup, four public works debris yard waste pickup, tree trim removal, and three miscellaneous road signs replaced, right-of-way grounds repair, decoration removal, dead animal removal. For the month of May, the town of Spring Hug use three point four million gallons, that's on your well production. You build out two point six four four million gallons and your wastewater treatment plant treated one point eight one five million gallons. That's with seven hundred and thirty-eight sewer customers. And that is everything but your drinking water report.
It's obvious that there's some issues been raised since the consumer confidence report was issued last week or week before. The wording has been misinterpreted and it's understandable because it's overwhelming, it's frightening, it's a lot of information that is mandatory, that doesn't really reflect the quality of your water. The, it made issues that we could see were the lead in the water, the disinfection byproducts in the water and the fact that the prior years, the twenty twenty is not the prominent date on it for some of the samples and some of the parameters. The lead, there's no lead detected in your water. It, it is checked every three years and there has been nothing to indicate that there's any lead. There was a mention of a report from, I think, Public Water Supply and that was a nineteen ninety-four report that was delivered to the state late. Disinfection byproducts, there's no detection of those in your water at all. They are things, they would be things that would cause cancer and so forth, but it is mandatory for us to put those warnings and, and comments and they are things that we cannot change. It comes down from the EPA. And our, those things are tested at places where we would expect them to, if they were in your water, we would expect them to be very high and it, and they're not even detected. So that's really a good thing. And the prior year on the report not being all twenty twenty is some of those parameters are tested every three, six, and nine years. And like I said about the lead, the lead and coppers every three years, that was done, last done in two thousand and eighteen, will be done this year. And that actually comes from the consumer. You're given a bottle to test to give a sample of that. It comes from the, your pipes. So the quality of your water is good, the state has deemed it that way, they've accepted this report. If, if it was not good, we would be testing all of that every year, but we're not. So.
So in twenty twenty.
Wait, this, this is the board. We'll get to you, you can get to you, but they have to answer to the board first. This is not, this is not public hearing right now.
Okay, half of what she says untrue.
So, are you questions from the board?
Now, I know the past month has been an anomaly with four water main breaks. I've, I've been up here, I've worked with y'all since you came here, I worked with the group before, even the town handled it, and I don't remember four breaks in a month. So I mean, I, I really don't, I mean, I was there all night on one, on that street. And when y'all cut the pipe, the integrity, the, the water pipe, the sound all the way across the pipe except for the, it was still a quarter inch thick. For those that you did not come out, and I don't know that there are, but a few people in this room will remember, when they were digging the road up after the asphalt was gone, with sixty-four, with sixty-four, not sixty-four alternate, it was a concrete highway. And there was eight inches of concrete that were dug up that night, eight to ten inches of concrete. And so I have no doubt that that water line was put in probably before I was born, in the early sixties. I just want to give a little bit hint about my age. Just for you, the, the note, I mean, it's, yes, when this happens, you know, there, there are people from this board that are out all night with it, it's not just in Environment. I missed the two out by Web's Mill Road. Got lucky, it was on vacation, good bet. And I'm not, I'm not going to address questions about the chemicals or whatever, but, you know, we'd all love to see new infrastructure in, done constantly, worked on. And I'm not going to let this get to be a battle whether he shit, said, she said, she's lying, he's lying, or whatever. We won't have that in this meeting. But I would tell you, from the size of this crowd, there's a lot of concern about what else is going on, what's happening and, yeah. Please explain your report however you wish, but, I mean, there's, there's a lot of concern in this town right now, especially with water.
I think there's more, there's two different issues, the, the infrastructure versus this report. Like I said, the state accept, accepted this report. Some of these parameters will be tested again this year. I can tell you off the top of my head which one is three years except for lead and copper.
The state mandates when we pull the samples. The reason the TTHMs showed up on the CCR this year was because instead of the operator having it pulled in the month of Sept-September, since you guys are well system and be pre-chlorined, he pulled it the first week of October and that's why it showed up on the report, not because it showed positive for TTHMs or HAA fives, it was just the fact that he didn't pull the sample on time. So the state mandates that we put it on there. As far as the two thousand and seventeen and other dates, the state mandates when we pull them. They tell us when to pull them, what months, the whole nine yards, just like a TTHM. As far as the, the chlorine residuals that I heard spoke about earlier, those chlorine residuals where it has the first sample and the second sample are your back tees, which is the super collar form samples that you have taken every month, you have two a month. If any one of those had came back bad, it would have been on that report as well. We have to do full disclosure on those. Anything that is not kosher with the state or is a violation, we have to put it on there. Now, some of the numbers are, they're confusing just because they do say two thousand and seventeen and so forth. I really wish they would change that, but the EPA mandates how the wording in that letter is.
Any questions from the board?
It seems to me from what you're saying, the water is safe.
Yes, sir, absolutely. If it wasn't safe, we would have to tell you. It's not like we're trying to hide anything. That report is sent out as a consumer confidence report for us to be completely upfront with everything that's going on with the year. Your water's just as safe as anybody else's or any town anywhere nearby. The only reason you only have to feed chlorine is because the water is damaged and the only reason chlorine is fed is to kill any contaminants or fecal that may be pumped out.
Anyone else from the board?
So with the pipes being as old as ready, not saying.
So it may not feel old, I, I can accept that.
I thought, oh, no. Oh, I wasn't saying, but, sorry, it's later. But with the pipes being, y'all know what I'm trying to say, and continuously breaking. What's the plan for that? Because I mean, I guess I'm just like the town, I, I went three days too, where I wasn't able to take a shower either, so.
I mean, we would, we would be happy to sit down and come up with a five-year plan or so with the town, but we, we, as a contractor, we only go as far as you guys will let us go. We'd be happy to show you how, or, and I'm sure you guys know the grants and USDA loans and everything that will help you replace some of the infrastructure, because the one on Webb's Mill is AC pipe. So that's a little older than the one that you've seen on sixty-four. So we'd be happy to help you in any way. The breaks, they're going to happen. Unless your system is brand new and all PVC and has been put in in the last ten years, it's going to happen.
So you're saying you guys know where the grants and stuff, because I know you've did a lot of lead work, so you're saying that you guys are aware where the grants.
But that's, that's the board's call.
Yes.
To ask us to do that.
Now, I did speak with the commissioner from Enfield today, a little larger than us, and his office is right at Webb's Mill, I mean, it's all they were not. And I told him how bad it been and he said, Enfield is, this is every month, four water main breaks a month, year round. I mean, I, I've worked with this board for twenty years and a year or two before that and I don't remember four, four breaks in one month. I cannot imagine the people of Enfield doing this every month, year round, year after year after year. And, and I asked what, what their cost was, how they're recouping and paying for all this. And he said essentially their water sewer garbage, I spent with the family too, is a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. And, and so the people in that town are paying a hundred dollars a month more in doing this year round and I cannot imagine why people still live there.
Robertson's used the same one.
So yes, we're constantly looking at grants and ways to enforce the infrastructure without raising taxes. I also did ask, Jay told you tonight, we're at sixty-seven cents per hundred dollars. Enfield's at ninety-two, so they're already paying fifty percent more in taxes, plus a hundred dollars more a month for water sewer garbage. And, and I, I can just imagine they're packing their bags, come live in Spring, I've only had one month, I have so many years like this. And, and just like the rest of you, you know, we had no water at my house, you know, it was, I agree that this was truly an anomaly. Like I said, I didn't see the shape of the two pipes on Webb's Mill. I saw the one on Hopkins, which I know the newspaper took pictures, the water was streaming above the trees. It was a three-quarter inch or one-inch water line that, that somebody installed in a terrible way. They came off of the six-inch main, they tapped the pipe pointing straight up right underneath the public roads, all the pressure cars going up and down it, everybody going back and forth to school was pushing on that one little plastic pipe. And I know when their guy showed, I was there before they broke up the asphalt and it was just a little bit of water peeping out and they tore the asphalt up and when they removed the dirt and the pipe sprung free and started spraying over the trees and, and, yeah, they're, were diligently without putting any water or getting any, not having sent out a boil water notice for Hopkins and sixty-four was, was terrible and it's, I, I don't even want to hesitate to guess is what it would cost to run PVC and water lines throughout this town if it wasn't, you'd have federal and state grants or what taxes would look like. It would be terrible. And, and I'm not saying this that you should run and hide or move away from Spring Hug, I'm just saying we've had a bad month. This is, this is definitely not typical. Now, I will let y'all and Mr. Richard talk outside, but I, I won't, at a town board meeting, have, have an, have an argument or discussion or, or people calling each other liars. This is an adult meeting, be talked about, talked with reasonably and constructively.
I have a question. Peaceful.
Sir, sir, I understand, you see, like you're back there waiting patiently. We've only got a couple of items left and when we go into the other business, you know, like I told her, if none of these commissioners will call on you, I, I will be happy to, to let you speak also. And please, please stick around, I understand from lawyer, he wants a closed session. I will move back to after the other business, just so y'all won't have to step outside and come back in. So the board, there's no more questions for Environment?
I actually have a question concerning that. With the grants, Jay, are you actively looking, I know you have found a lot of different grants.
So the town has been awarded the AIA grant, the Asset Inventory Assessment Grant. That is both for water and wastewater. That's for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a piece. We are working with Matt Gay Associates, engineering firm for that. Typically, after an assessment like that, we will, will follow up and debrief with the engineering firm to see what projects are things that we should tackle or look at first. That grant program is something that's highly encouraged by DEQ, especially for smaller rural communities, to look at their infrastructure, to get in a good assessment of what you have inventory-wise and what you need to do to, because as far as a lot of the grants, there's scoring methods for DEQ and for those who have been awarded the AIA grant, it actually gives you additional points to go through this. So it's kind of a stepping stone. Again, it's something that when Kevin and I and Environment were working on the twenty year plan, that AIA grant application and was involved or incorporated into that plan as well early on. So again, we've, we're taking the initial early steps to see where we would need to start on our infrastructure plans and potential projects in the future.
And you know, we also already have in the past taken advantage of the clean water and the rural grants, so we're not like we're uncommitted, we're just.
Doesn't Matt Gay Associates work with us on a regular basis, providing that kind of thing that's available to us that we may qualify for?
Right, and then also working with the stock engineering as well too. So again, it's something that, that we'll look at towards the end, during this project to see, again, what future projects could be available. I know that people like to mention grants early on, but again, these are typically grant and low-interest loans. We do already have several low-interest loans that are repaying, a, a lift station rehabilitation that we did, the country end. We do already have several low-interest loans that are repaying, a lift station rehabilitation that we did, the country lift station. We're also paying back a USDA loan on, on this facility here at Town Hall. And we're also paying back a USDA loan on the wastewater treatment facility as well too.
And do we not have a problem with the School Street well?
We're working on that as well with the School Street well, but we're also looking at potentially bringing on an older well too. It's in my report for the manager's report later on, on Poplar Street. So again, we're...
Who, who was doing that work on School Street?
The mayor.
There are no other questions for EnviroLink. Thank you. And I will let you and Mr. Richard wish to go outside and, and talk friendly, socially, have different viewpoints. We've discussed as adults on our property. Thank you. The next item I have on our monthly agenda is the Police Chief's Report.
Yes, you have there the May 2021 events. We have four items listed. Total calls to service is 189, 245 security checks, 71 vehicle stops, five vehicle accidents, and four street light outages have been reported.
Next item on my agenda is the Manager's Report.
First item listed is the Downtown Development Board Update. On 5/25/21, the DDB with assistance of Cardinal Engineering hosted a public forum. We were discussing potential concept designs for the Downtown Depot area. Again, we were able to do this, and it was possibly maybe be made by the Brownfields grant that the town was awarded several years ago from the EPA. Again, this was an opportunity to give stakeholders input. You know, during these charrette drawing exercises that we had, people were drawing on large trace maps. And just a, a brief bullet point on some of the ideas that came from these concept designs was a walking, walking pathway, greenway features for the Downtown Depot area. Included potentially removing trees and bushes to make space for functional event space. Water features were discussed, rebuilding the platform, original platform to the depot was discussed. Adding a railcar or caboose beside the, the platform was also discussed. And again, potentially relocating the library to make space for retail and/or restaurant use. Again, Cardinal is going to be taking all of this feedback, all, they took all of the trace maps. And then they'll be coming back with some potential design concepts at a later date. Next item is the Poplar Street well, we've mentioned earlier. We've been working with, again, Kevin and Sox Engineering, but also with PWS, Sean Geyer. Apparently, there was some potential dis, confusion about the historical approvals or documents regarding our wells, which they couldn't find the information at the state. Basically, I believe it appears that well number five was originally approved as well number six. They couldn't find the paperwork on that. But again, our next steps now is to move forward with the current location. We're working with a contractor to do the well testing for the, to check for contaminants before we move, make a way for permanent improvements. And that would include, again, four-inch lining, a wellhouse, chemical feeds. And again, all of this must be permitted and approved by PWS, which is Public Water Supply. And again, when we have additional information, and, and we'll report that to the board as well. The third item, again, had been mentioned earlier before, the, the watering breaks. Again, basically talking about the, the four service lines within the last three and a half weeks. And again, I listed the locations. Wanted to just reiterate that the, the first two, two breaks listed on the list, which was East Nash Street slash 64th Alternate and Montgomery Street slash Webb's Mill Road, affected the whole or majority of the town residents and businesses with service. The, the, again, the last two, which was on West Main Street and Hopkins, only affected a few residences. And then the first one was the only one that required a boil notice. And then most of the service was, returned to most accounts within three days. Part of the delay that wasn't mentioned earlier was that with the first break, we had the wrong-sized pipe to our repair system map, which had indicated that it was a 10-inch line, but instead it was an actual eight-inch line. Also, timers had went off on the pump several of the wells prior to filling up the towers. Again, causing the delays in, in the towers to be filled. But we're in a process of updating and replacing the timers with pressure, pressure switch systems. And again, as for the Montgomery Street slash Webb's Mill Road leak, it was all fixed within 24 hours. And service was, was, was returned even with having to buy parts from the supply house the following morning. Again, service was done within 24 hours and no boil notice was required. And then for the last item is the Public Nuisance and Violation Report, which we have a copy from ACE, indicating the 64 cases highlighted in red are still open cases. Highlighted in green are the abated cases. Again, I believe that there was a hearing held for some of the, the cases, I believe, last Tuesday. And again, looking towards trying to get a lot of these abated sooner. Any questions?
I have, I have one. Alliance Co-Enforcement. I know they had an issue with a property and wanted to contact everybody via email. And the property owner does not use email, as other people in town do. And we probably need to make sure if they notice, they notify people, they need to give them an alternate method, either coming through the Town Hall with a phone call or whatever.
And typically, I believe with the letters, that yes, there is email that is included with the letter, but there is also a phone number as well. But again, if, for whatever reason or purposes, they can't get ahold of them, people have left messages here at Town Hall with me, and I have gotten in contact with the contractor, so.
Anybody else from the board have any questions for the manager?
All right, Jay, can we just make sure he returned Paul's, because I actually let him answer myself, but he didn't return my call at all.
Okay, I'll follow up with you.
If there are no other questions for the manager, we're gonna get to other business. Wait, 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 wait. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give one of them first chance, and if they don't, I have told you, I will call you first and him second. Please don't let me forget you. I'm gonna start the scene here with Commissioner Wilkins.
Can I go ahead and call ownership and...
You, you wanna take, you wanna take, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I just want to know, is it gonna be the town's position to not allow comments after posts? You're just gonna cut off comments period going forward, or just whenever there's a problem in town?
At this time, we have, because of the, I believe, unconstructive criticism or misinformation that was, that has been posted on a lot of the past town updates, right now, the position is that unless the board has deemed otherwise, that again, comments will be left off. We will give updates. I understand that some people have made comments about updates. It had been two or three or several hours. Again, when we have additional or new information that we receive in contact with EnviroLink, we will be posting additional updates. But if there has been no change, that is the status and it's just on standby situation.
So since yesterday, there has been no change?
There has been no change. We are working with EnviroLink. We're also working with another contractor.
Kind of hard to hear you. I didn't understand it.
We're working with EnviroLink, and we're also working with other contractors coming in to, to inspect our tower that we have on Branch Street. So we are working on it. And then again, as soon as we find additional information on knowing what's going on, we'll post additional updates as that progresses.
Now, along that, so it's gonna be case by case, whether you allow comments, whatever you deem that you want to hear feedback from, or just...
Right now, we're, right now, all comments have been suspended. Right now, it is, we're giving status updates. If people want to share, they still have the ability to share those updates they can. We're just posting updates. If they, they, you can still contact Town Hall as well by phone or email. And then obviously through email contact through the Facebook account as well too.
So just on water, you're turning it off? You post something else?
For, for, for all, all updates and, and news that we share, we will post those updates.
And not allow comments? I just want to understand. You're not gonna allow comments?
We're not picking and choosing. Right now, this is the status of, of just posting updates. But again, people still have the ability to contact and call Town Hall if they have additional questions.
So you're gonna silence opposition?
May I ask you one question?
I just asked.
No, no, I just, I, my question's much simpler. You waited all evening. And, and, and I, I, I keep all my folders, and, and when I retire, these are gonna be left over. May I have your name for my note?
Robin.
Just Robin?
You want the whole nine letters? Begins with K, ends in K.
Robin, K, blank, 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 K?
K is nine letters, begins in K, ends in K. O, R, I, C is in cap, A, N, E, K.
I'm gonna go with Robin. I'm good with Robin.
But I just want to know, and I, I can't really understand, is if you're gonna cut off all comments on all communication from the town to the public on Facebook, or just on certain topics?
I'm gonna let his, his comment stand, and, and when he comes around, I, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to yours outside, yes. Anything else?
The commissioner in the plaid shirt asked Jay about a grant of something, and then Jay replied. So is there any system of communication to advise citizens of any infrastructure business?
Infrastructure business?
Because you, he asked you about a grant. You said, "Yeah, we have a grant for thus and such."
So when we have, for example, when we apply for certain grants, we are awarded certain grants. Those, when we apply for certain grants, we have to typically have a resolution. Those resolutions here are approved, and also they're also sometimes require public hearings. And they're also advertised in the local paper. So again, those are legal requirements by the state, which we do. Typically, we also make those announcements online or on the town's website as well when we do acquire or reach out for certain grant opportunities or receive them or awarded.
Well, that, I understand that, because you answered his question. I said that, you replied. And then I asked, is there a sys, a communication and system in place to advise citizens of infrastructure business? Because I hear the water issues, and then I infer that, buddy, the mayor doesn't want to go down that road, because it'd be like Enfield, people leaving Enfield to come to Spring Hope. So what happens when they blow up Spring Hope? And then where they gonna go? Now, I simplify that. I simplify that for you.
My, 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 my response to your question is, the monthly meetings, you're, you're all more than welcome to come. Just don't come because it was a bad water month. Come every month. That's how I got involved with this board. Like, I came to a meeting, and it was so interesting, I came back the next month. But any grants, nothing, and just the amount of paid work, the application process, the months it takes? Just to, to get an application filed, and then they're all rated against each other?
I understand that. I know how much detail is what I said. Is there a communication system in place to advise citizens of infrastructure business? And then you said, "Yes, there is," and you have to come to Town Hall to get it. Okay, that's, that's your answer.
Like this young lady right here, who doesn't have a computer. So if we send it out on Facebook, she doesn't know. I have, the person that called me about the problem with this owns 10 houses in town, 10 rental units. He does not do the internet. Facebook, it is not the whole answer. You know, the, the phone tree, we could, we could put it out on phone tree, you know, every time we apply for a grant, if you'd like to come and, come here. What, what would you like?
No, I'm, I'm just asking the question. It's like you're pushing it down the road, waiting till Enfield did. Well, they're leaving Enfield, but they're not paying a hundred dollars a month for, for water and garbage sewer. So they're gonna come to Spring Hope. Why are they still living in Enfield? So what happens when Spring, when Spring Hope blows up, where are they gonna go? Because that's where it's headed, because you have a 20-year plan.
Well, if you don't, the 20, the 20-year plan, and part of that was to assess our infrastructure and what we have here, and to make a plan on how we could move forward and how we could charge the right amount. Water and sewer should be profitable for a town, because the only way you can make repairs and be ready for the future is to charge enough to be able to do that. And so we had a plan, 20-year plan developed. You could have come to that, anybody could come to that meeting. And that's so we can make a plan for what we think the next 20 years might be. And as this gentleman pointed out, that's probably not gonna be accurate 20 years from now. But we gotta start some, but wait a minute, don't interrupt, a minute, interrupt. We have to start somewhere with a plan. And so we've done that, and we are actively applying for grants. Matt Gay and Associates helps us do that. There's no way we can, we would fill up the paper if we had minutes from these meetings published in a newspaper every month. So we are actively working on that system. Yes, this system needs some help. We're trying to get that done without making the taxes much higher, without raising the water rates much higher. And that plan may not be feasible 20 years from now, but it is something that we looked at so that we can try to plan and be ready. And so outside of you coming to the meetings or reading the paper or talking to any of us at this meeting or away from this meeting, I don't know what we could do to get all that information out to all the residents of this town.
So there's not a communication system for infrastructure business? Put it on the internet. Does it, does...
Well, just like we spoke about this lady, that might work for you, but it won't work for her. So how many systems of disseminating that information do we need to add?
Well, how many do you have?
Well, I just mentioned to you, you can come to these meetings, you can read the paper, you can go on Facebook and look. You can call Jay, you can call the town office, you could call any of us, and we could talk to you about what we're working on. Probably...
Yeah, there's also the live stream that you're...
As, as long as, since I've been on this board, whatever little bit of time that is, there are probably more people in this meeting tonight than there have ever been in all the other meetings cumulatively put together. And the water is an issue, and I don't like to be without water either, and I would want my water to be safe. But we need you all to come to these meetings. Come to the meetings or call us. We don't know what you're concerned about if you don't let us know. And so the best way to let us know about these is in a constructive manner. So if you're not, this, this is, Brother said this is after me, to me. If you're not part of the solution, then maybe you're part of the problem.
That's old.
So if you have, it is, and so, and so if you have, so if you have, so if you have something that might be part of a solution for this, we would like to hear it. But I'm not, I don't have time to go on Facebook and see people's comments back and forth and negative things. So come to us and talk to us about...
So I'm not the problem. Is I'm not a part of the solution, I'm the problem?
If you can come to us with some things that might be a solution, we would love to hear. That's all I'll say.
Coming tonight is part of the solution.
Absolutely.
But this is, this is what we want. We want input from as many people as we can. And, and we'll get to you. Commissioner Wilkins called on her. She's, she's been, she's been waiting all night patiently. And, and, and we won't, now that I don't have to call on her, if they won't get you all right. Commissioner Wilkins, do you have anything else to say?
Are y'all gonna call on the rest of the...
We're going around the table. You're, you two first, first.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the next, but they gonna call now again.
I'm, I'm referring to this gentleman right here that has to speak earlier than me.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
My question was going to be that a lot of our community, citizens of Spring Hope, myself included, thought that we were going to be able to ask questions of EnviroLink. Now, I'm actually wrong, but that's what, that's what I thought. And so to be told, "No," and, "Oh, wait, they're gone." Or, "Are they still out there?" And when I say ask questions of them, questions of them, that would be on the record, not outside on the sidewalk. I think that's... I think that's weak and I think it's just a waste of this collective time here. And I felt, I take your point, sir, about bring, I'm all about bringing solutions, but we're not the problem. We came expecting answers to our questions. And here we are. It's, I haven't finished yet. It's dark outside, these people are tired, and these people have gone. That's what I was saying.
I was going to offer you a, a, a chance. We could request a special town hall meeting with just EnviroLink to talk to the public and give you a question-answer session. I've been on this board where meetings last and we, we recess at ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night and come back next day and, and discuss. We just don't want to have a six or eight hour meeting if, if you would like. And I'm sure most of you would like, especially God, a chance to be one-on-one with them under a format where you have, you have the right to ask them a question directly. This is, this is our, this is our monthly meeting. Any other, any other committee, county commissioners or whatever would have a separate meeting for that occasion would give you all a chance to go one-on-one.
Well, you asked my question. Thank you.
So if you'd like, then, you know, I'm sorry, I'm setting Mr. Kane's moment. Then, uh, we can surely ask Mr. Myers and his people to come and, and, and know it's going to be a one-on-one and, and we may, as the board, sit on the same side of the table with you and just put a moderator so the, the meeting doesn't get ugly and people walk out.
Yeah, sure.
Does that sound like a plan for somebody? Mr. Richard?
What's that? I'm sorry. What do y'all all say about?
Please, someone explain him after, which, we missed the Kane's.
Well, we'll, 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 we'll Q and A with.
A town hall meeting.
Yes.
Senator?
A town hall meeting with EnviroLink and the citizens.
I think that's perfect. I think that's all they want.
I think the board should be there too. I think.
Well, I, I think we, it would, it would be better if we came because we are all residents.
He said he's going to put their box of blows and come on our side, right? In boxing against.
Well, I totally agree. We should really have a calm discussion and really get educated.
Michelle.
Because I want to get, I want to.
Ms. Post, Ms. Post.
Yes.
Hey, Commissioner hasn't called on you yet and now, Brent, say to that person, I will let you and your next, your partner sitting next to you both talk during my time. But we're going, we're going to go, because we still have a closed session, we're going to have to have tonight too after this. But I don't want you all to have to go outside and the doors close and then come back in and, and we're ready to adjourn. So that's why we chose to move this second meeting. Mr. Kane, if you're done, I'm going to give Mr. Griffin the chance to call on somebody or speak, speak his own.
Yes, sir.
Michelle, you can have my, my phone.
Wait, 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 wait. You, you jumped somebody.
This, this young lady right here.
If you're, if you're going to take my stuff.
So.
Me?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
This is who I was thinking about you mentioning, right here, Buddy.
Yes, sir, the young lady in the black with her hand raised.
So, yeah.
I don't necessarily have a solution, but maybe a suggestion. Um, I think, yes, we all hated going three days without having a shower. I really hated going three days without being able to flush my toilet. Um, so my suggestion would be maybe the town come up with maybe a better emergency response to these types of situations. Not only the fact that we have a water main break, we lose water for three days, but we have hurricanes where we lose water, lose electricity for days on ends. It would have been nice to have some non-potable water stations where people could bring a bucket and get some water to flush their toilet instead of having to drive to Nashville, Rocky Mountain, wherever, since our food line was out of water, to buy water, um, to flush our toilet with, especially with the number of citizens, senior citizens that we have in town who are shut-ins who don't drive. So that would be my contribution to a solution. And better communication would be better as well. Um, I don't feel like we use the phone tree sufficiently. Um, I think if you sent out reminders about the town meetings on the phone tree, you probably would get better, um, participation as well.
They used to do that.
Yeah, they used to do that, yeah.
And I was going to say that we did have, and probably because it was on Facebook and a lot of people are not on Facebook, um, with the Ephesus, Ephesus church.
Yes.
Ephesus church did have.
After what, day two, they did. Yes, but I, I mean, to me, I felt like the town kind of failed in their response. Um, I mean, that was of the graciousness of Ephesus. That didn't have anything to do with the town from what I understand. That was the church stepping up
Correct.
and helping out their community, which I think was great. But I think the town should have had a plan in place to respond.
Good point, Mr. Kane.
Thank you.
Did she want to call with my help?
No, I think I, I guess that was my. Jay, I think, had a comment. He had his hand raised, maybe a response to.
So the phone tree messaging does take about four hours to go through the whole cycle. Uh, we would like, again, we, some people have complained about not getting calls, but some people haven't updated their numbers. So when you set up your account or utility account, that is the number that we have. And in many cases, uh, some residents have changed numbers over the years and they have not updated with the town. So again, we have to have specific current numbers to be able to, to reach you through the phone tree messaging system. And then we also have, have had, uh, many people asked to be removed from the phone tree messaging system as well too because they have gotten, uh, too many calls, they believe, or calls late at night or situations. So again, we have been in a situation where we've had to remove numbers from it at their request. So again, that, that, the announcements on the town's social media account and also on the website and then posting on the town front door, those are typically the methods that we, we use to try to communicate information and disseminate it as, as fast as we can.
So, okay, you're like number three on the list.
Okay.
Uh, and please, as Jay said, check, maybe not everybody call in the morning or all of you call in the morning. Um, check and make sure your number's right on the phone tree. Because if, if, if I, like, I dropped my landline, if they don't have the right number or it was entered wrong, or if you haven't gotten calls from the phone tree, then your updated number is not correct, it's not calling you. And so if you want to know how it stopped happening, I mean, it is, it is simple to call the town hall and say, "Could you please check and make sure my phone number is, is correct for the phone tree?" Commissioner Lucas. It, it's, it's your, your moment.
You're going to call. You can let the rest of you talk, right? Ask questions, right?
I, I will, I will till a certain time and, and yes, I have to, I have to get up in the morning too, so.
Okay.
So if, if sun starts to break, I'm definitely going to end the meeting, but.
But you don't have to talk on your time, so.
Yes, ma'am. This is your time.
I, 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 only thing I have to say is, um, I feel your pain. I live in town, I had the same pain. And the best thing for all of us to do when tragedy happen, I happen, occurs, be, be, to the calm and not criticize, but, but if you don't have a positive response, please don't put out a negative one. That's all I have to say. Because we in this town, we in here together, okay?
Commissioner Doctor?
I have nothing but other than who's number one on your list.
Who is?
I, I would. Say it right back here.
I, I would say it's, it would be Michelle, the, the man in the green hat and, and Nancy. Yes, ma'am.
The only thing I was going to say is, I'm here tonight, and I do plan on trying to come more. I've been going to some of the other, um, meetings, um, since I'm also on the planning board as well. But I just, I really come today because I really wanted to hear, you know, for myself. Because you're right, there is a lot of misinformation that's going on out there and there's a lot of things. And we have a, a new anonymous citizen in town who's been posting a lot of things. And, and I really just want us to get the right answer, to find out what are, what are our plans? Because obviously we all admit we have a problem. How are we going to fix it? What can we do to fix it? What are our options? How can we together as a town come to a solution to fix the problem? Because we all live here and we all care. And, and, and we all, I just want us to find the solutions and, and what can we do?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I probably should ask something where we are maybe, I don't know. Uh, on the budget, when you talked about the budget, seventy thousand dollars for repairs, is there stuff in the budget for their maintenance program they have?
When you say maintenance program, who's maintenance program?
Well, this young man back here made a statement that when a new builder builds a project, he then pays for all the infrastructure, gives it to the town, there'd be enough money within that project for maintenance. What is done maintenance-wise here? Uh, I think if I understand right, a town this size would have valves positioned in certain places. So when there's a break, the whole town doesn't suffer from this. Is there a problem with valves? Where is the maintenance on these valves?
As, as Mr. Kane mentioned earlier, there's an AI grant where they are chasing the water lines and all the valves to, to find out where they're at so we can start finding out how many were covered in asphalt and, and are unnoticed.
But my point is, why, where is this maintenance? Is there not a maintenance program set up? Does EnviroLink do no maintenance at all for the last ten years for whoever had the project? That time, is there no maintenance to go out and check valves? So you don't end up with this chasing it after the fact, buddy, is what I'm getting at.
I understand where you're going. And yes, there is ongoing maintenance. Opening and closing valves, no, they don't do, just because of the distance underground and age. But yes, I mean, water and sewer lines are, are checked. They have to do a certain percentage of the town every year, every month, where they are, they're clearing sewers and, and just water jetting them and cleaning them. Whether or not it's practical to open and close valves, because the only way you can really test them is start shutting off water in a house is to, to confirm this valve works and this valve works so we can take out the three hundred block of Nash Street and, and, and cut all water off to that fat, those families for an hour or an hour and a half and move on. Is, is it practical?
Better than three days.
Really?
I mean, I'm making, I'm just, I've, I've worked in the business a little bit. Um, now is there a plan that we know there's valves that are bad because you couldn't shut nothing down, I don't think? Is there a plan to go back and fix the valves now or that valve's going to stay dead forever?
Well, no, there is a, there is a crew ready.
Well, a crew ready.
No, I mean, right, it, it's, that's already a question that's, that's addressed and answered. And one of the larger problems with Nash Street was shutting the valves off on the towers to protect the water that was in them. And that's where it came out that this valve on this tower doesn't work. Or, or why is there no float on the school street well? And I, I can tell you, my work with EnviroLink and the town manager, I don't care where the money comes from. I, I, it's, I want it now, more so than you. I mean, I, I, you know.
Maintenance is very important. I mean, that's everything. And then the problem is, it seems now that the town is scrambling to try to come up with a new infrastructure and nothing's being done to maintain the old stuff that we have to a degree.
It's, it's all, pretty much, most of the valves up and down the street were, were checked during the large outage. But the, the not being able to cut off the water tower or get the pressure out so EnviroLink could even cut the pipe to restore, I mean, we, we shut down all the wells, produced no water, trying to get the pressure off so they could open that pipe and fix it and start with repairs. And hours after that, we, the water would level off and you would think it was done. And they would move dirt and all of a sudden it would start coming back out of the ground eighteen inches and flowing down the street just because there, there was no way to close the tower. Oh, yeah, that tower better be fixed before July fourth. And if not, middle of June or June tenth.
Okay.
I, I'm.
Yeah, it just, I know it's frustrating.
No, I, I'm, I'm as pissed off or mad as you or anybody here.
Is there a maintenance program? Do we have one?
To, to open and close valves?
Well, any, I mean, there's.
Yeah, there's, there's ongoing maintenance, yes. There is ongoing maintenance. Shouldn't there be more? Probably.
Well, then that costs more, of course, I guess, I'm sure.
Right. So yes, we are, you, you, you can be second, but Nancy, Nancy, you better hand up first.
All right.
Hey, Mr. Jeffrey, is he there?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't recognize you with your hat on.
No, no, I, I was.
You live in the neighborhood and you moved out of the neighborhood and you're like. Yes, ma'am.
Just to back up what Tara said about having water available in case of an emergency. I was in Virginia last week, believe it or not, they had a water main break. But the fire department brought out these great big red plastic, they actually folded up. They look like giant swimming pools and they filled them full of water and had them placed around town so that people could go and at least get water for toilets. And so that might be something that maybe the fire department could be thinking about or looking at to maybe bring some water into town if it, and it will happen again, I mean, I have no doubt. But at least we can be a little bit better, have a plan and be a little bit better prepared.
I, I think, you know, like, I think it's a wonderful idea not to thought about the problem of water and I'd be willing to bet that the towns that have those had this problem and went without water for a couple of days and said, "You know what?" Lining up, you know, some of the rural fire departments, bringing tankers in from other areas for citizens, they probably lived through it and they learned their lesson and maybe this is where we learn ours that we all need to look at, you know, collapsible tanks or I'm sure any of the local rural fire departments would be more than happy to bring their trucks over.
Well, that would have appeased an awful lot of people during that three days, if something like that had happened.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that this is not another kick, can down the road situation because I've lived here thirty years and this situation was in process when I moved here. And it has gotten kicked down the road for maintenance, for replacement, for the whole nine yards. I have spoken up occasionally. I had other issues at home, couldn't do it for a while, but I'm back. I, I'm with the rest of these folks. We need some answers and we need them yesterday.
I just feel like this sound room is, is nothing. Alright, everyone.
I want to say one thing. Can I say something?
Yes, sir, you had your, yes. You made your case. Yes, sir.
If I remember right, uh, the water system and the maintenance of it was in really bad shape when EnviroLink took over because, and so we're trying to get it right. And, and I, we, I would like to say, uh, whether you know it or not, kudos to our mayor because it is untold the number of hours this man has spent in our wastewater treatment plant and our well houses and a lot, a lot of the maintenance issues in this town. Uh, every year he makes sure all the electricity is hooked up for the vendors at pumpkin festival. And Buddy, I don't even know how much time you have spent in the wastewater treatment plant and at the wells and the pump stations and done work and donated your time and done things for this town and, and never charged us anything. You just did it because it needed to be done.
A minor change happening now. Yeah, there are a lot. You got, you got, you got two and three hour calls, yes. You can have the, the two and three day calls where I can't go to work, I guess. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta pay a, pay a minimum.
So there've been a lot of good suggestions made tonight, which we appreciate. But I just wanted to mention how much work Buddy has done over the years. That's unseen, nobody knows about it.
And actually, for those of you that have low pressure, I know Michelle, I got compliments on her today and Sandra, who was taking, uh, checking the town's emails. And somebody called at ten fifty-five one night and got a call back at eleven o'clock that night. Sandra and her family rode around for three hours this weekend looking for leaks and assisting EnviroLink just riding the streets. There, there are people in back streets that looked at me and want to know why I was in their neighborhood and, and, you know. You know, if, if you see a lot of water coming out of the ground, don't say, "Hmm." Please, call us. Call. Somebody is always monitoring a fan.
One more, just little thing. Make sure everybody knows that from the meter to the house is their responsibility. And it will come out of their pocket if it's on the other side of the meter, not from the meter to the street. That's a voice of experience. Thank you.
Alright, everyone.
This, this is quick. It's nothing to do with water.
Look, she got her hand back out.
Or infrastructure or any of that. Um, a lot of you may not know the local high school football coach. I don't want to try and get emotional. Um, he actually, after thirty years, retired today. And he has been very instrumental and key in the lives of a lot of our young men, uh, from. from Julius Peppers, who everybody knows well, he was one of the coaches, he wasn't the head coach, but he was very instrumental all the way through the career. So from this board, and from me personally, I hope this finds a way to him. Thank you for everything you have done. Uh, he has taught good Christian values, uh, he has been a role model to a lot of these young men that didn't have role models, so I just want to say, thank you very much, Brian, and after retirement, you have earned.
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll.
It's a thank you.
If, if Mr. Kane would say, can.
It's a thank you for all the hard work you do, but I do appreciate the phone calls that come to my home when something goes wrong. Thank you.
That's it, alright. Everyone, the, the next item on our agenda is a closed session. Um, I'm gonna have to ask you all to leave while we handle this. There is, as far as I know.